Good afternoon. Carolyn Wright, Chair of the School Board of Virginia Beach. And we are meeting today at 3:00 here in the chambers temporarily. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Melnick to read us into closed session. Oh, this is...
Yeah, you need to call the order. You need to do your verbal roll call. And then you need to adopt your agenda.
All right, this is combined agendas. I didn't realize that. Okay. All right, we'll do a little redo here. In accordance with the schedule of school board meetings amended and approved by the school board at their January 25, 21 regular meeting, and pursuant to Bylaw 146 and Virginia Code 2.2-3707, the school board will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, February 1, 2022, at 3:00 p.m. in the school board chambers in this school administration building number 6 at the municipal center, 2512 George Mason Drive, Virginia Beach, Virginia 23456. The purpose of this special meeting is for consultation with legal counsel regarding new election districts and election cycle, and discussion and action on the new election districts and election cycles for the school board. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call those present?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers is Chairwoman Wright, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. So that brings us to adoption of the agenda. Any modifications? Mrs. Weems.
Yes, Ms. Wright, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda by striking number five.
Who did the second? Thank you, Ms. Manning.
Okay, further explanation?
Okay, yeah, sure. Colleagues, last week, we discussed what the 5:00 meeting would be about and why we were going to have a 5:00 meeting. We went in great detail for clarification. And in that clarification, we agreed that we would be discussing in public, but that we would not vote, and that we would take public input after tonight's meeting, the next time we brought it to the board, which would be next Tuesday. Dr. Spence actually clarified it. Ms. Manning clarified it. It's all on tape. The public has seen it. If we go, if we do number five and vote on something, we have lied to the public because that's not what we said we were going to do last week. So let's stick to our plans. Let's discuss it in the open. The public can hear us discuss it. And then in the next week, they can email us. Or the next Tuesday, when we have it on the agenda as information and/or action, they can come and speak to us directly if they choose to. So we need to stick to our plans. We said this seven days ago, so let's stick to our plans. Thank you.
Mrs. Hughes.
Yeah, I would like to further add that when we were reworking our order of the agenda during Policy Review Committee, you know, we discussed in great detail that we would have speakers, and we could, you know, do information, and then speakers again before we did anything on consent or action, because we wanted to make sure that we were allowing the public to weigh in prior to voting on things. And that was something, actually, one of the things that we actually all agreed on is that we need to get public input before we vote on things. And so for the reasons that Ms. Weems stated, and additionally, because I do think it's important that we get public input on public business prior to voting on things, I think the resolution should be pulled off and added next week.
The action is, and we'll ask for Mrs. Cam, Mrs. Lynetti to weigh in, action is, there is going to be discussion, an open discussion in the open session, and there, and this would be a possible outcome of that. But Mrs. Lynetti?
If you remember, prior to last week's meeting, the meetings before that, you asked us to hire outside counsel. You asked us to bring outside counsel in for a closed session. So the initial notice for the closed session with starting at 3:00 was to have a closed session with your outside counsel. Mr. Sebastian's here. And I've been there for action based on what comes out of outside counsel. And since you've not met with outside counsel before, you needed that opportunity to decide if you needed to take appropriate action based on what you were hearing from him. When you added the session last week, you wanted to move in an open session, discuss it. I just plugged it back into your notice, because the notice on the closed session included action, because you might need to take action. I didn't specifically put the resolution on as what you were doing. That was a suggestion, because another school board member had asked me to draft that. That's a possibility. But you don't know what's coming out of your closed session is what you might need to do. And that's why we want to leave you the option for it. And that was based on what the closed session pieces of it. You were talking about a 5:00 session about talking to the public. I did not read that as you said this was the only thing that were happening. You were combining the two issues, and you were going to talk today about what, whether you were going to put this on for the public, and when you were going to put that on for the public. And again, I remind you, what we're dealing with today really is a legal issue. And so, you know, you can make your decisions whether the public needs to be involved in that. But I think it's important that you leave yourself the opportunity, based on what you hear today, whether you need to take action. And that's how the notice came up, because I was combining your two meetings into one. And again, when you asked me to set up the meeting with outside counsel, it was so that you could make appropriate action based on what your outside counsel was telling you.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
So in lieu of what Mrs. Lynetti just said, I would like to amend this further to state, instead of removing it, instead, I'd like it to say possible action by school board regarding, just add the word possible. And because we don't know what's going to be said to us by legal counsel, so I think we need to wait and see. And then if we decide that we want to wait before adopting the motion or the resolution, then I think that gives us leeway. But I think if we just add possible action, Mrs. Lynetti, is that possible for me to do that if I have a second?
You're allowed a second motion. So you either could amend what Mrs. Weems said, or you can offer another motion. And that would be the limited motion you have until you start voting on.
I would like to have a second motion instead.
Sorry. The second motion on the floor is Mrs. Anderson's motion to amend what would be number five in your notice, action by school board regarding school board's position on new election districts and cycles to be possible action by the school board.
Correct.
And that's the motion you're seconding, Mrs. Riggs? It appears that that would be your motion on the floor at the moment.
Any comment on that before we vote on that? Mrs. Manning.
So we have been meeting in closed session with legal counsel for a number of months now on this. And in every meeting, I have expressed my concerns that none of these discussions have taken place in open session. Our community has no idea what we're talking about. They don't know the different options. They don't know anything that's going on. And anytime I've brought this up to my colleagues on the board, everybody seemed to think and agree with me, yes, we should not be voting without the public being notified of this. And I'm just baffled. I mean, I don't necessarily oppose this resolution. I oppose voting on something when we've not even had discussions in the public or offered the public an opportunity to understand what's going on, because quite frankly, it's very complicated. And it's just not right. It's just not right. This is a lack of transparency. And I agree with Ms. Weems. We're lying to the public when we said that we would, we would be discussing this in open session. And now, all of a sudden, this is the first time we're going to be talking about it in open session. And while I agree that in the past, there's been some legal ramifications of this, and I supported having outside counsel come in, we're no longer, the school board is not under litigation. And as far as I can tell, there's probably no possibility that the school board will be litigated against, because it's not our decision. This is a decision that has to be made by the Department of Elections, not the Virginia Beach School Board.
And Mrs. Manning?
And can I finish, please? And we're, we're individual politicians here advocating for something that's going to happen in November. I don't think it's the place of this school board as a body to be advocating for something that could impact us individually in November on the ballot. I think that should be two separate things.
And I just wanted to share that these comments would be appropriate to share when we get to that point of the agenda. And that's why, and that, we're just trying now to adopt an agenda.
Yeah, this is my reason for not wanting to take action and, you know, to amend the agenda. So that's, that's my reason.
Right, so I'll remind colleagues, the motion on the floor right now is to consider, Mrs. Riggs? We need to... Excuse me. Didn't, Mrs. Riggs is called to speak.
Okay. What I would like for Mrs. Lynetti is to explain what we had talked about, if she could do that, and explain what we will be sharing in our open session, if we are going to be sharing. I mean, we are supposed to be talking about this in our open meeting tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Am I, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so we, which is what you just said. Can you repeat that and explain, and give some more explanation? Because I think Mrs., I'm feeling that Mrs. Manning has it confused. Okay?
Let me see if I...
The motion on the floor is possible. We have a second on the motion to approve, to, for a, for an amended agenda that recognizes...
The second, the second one that you're voting on is Mrs. Anderson's motion seconded by Mrs. Riggs, which is number five would be possible action by the school board. If that fails, I mean, go back to Mrs. Weems' motion.
Mrs. Weems. Nope. Oh, oh. Call them out, please. Mrs. Hughes.
They're already spoken.
Well, I still feel that this is doing an end run around the public. I would be shocked if we found out something in closed session that would demand that we vote on this on February 1st instead of February 8th, before the public's had a chance to weigh in. And has been, as has been pointed out multiple times, these are the people's seats. This is the people's process. And doing an end run around the public is a large reason why this body has lost public trust. I think that we need to be more transparent, and we need to do what we say we're going to do. This needs to be removed. And if we feel that we need to vote on something, it should be on the February 8th of the agenda.
Possible point of information? We are supposed to be discussing the word possible added on here. That is what this, this discussion should be about right now. Either adding the word possible, or if we defeat my motion, then we go back to arguing yea or nay whether we're going to have that on the agenda. Okay? My motion is to add the word possible.
Well, I made that point five minutes ago, but...
Thank you. And really, I guess, some of this can happen when we get to the discussion. But I agree that we initially had a plan to vote on our resolution on the 8th. And so there would have to be something, I guess, shocking that comes out of our closed session for that to change for me. We haven't gone into the closed session, so I don't know if there's going to be something shocking. We have not spoken to the attorney that we all were in favor of retaining. I'd like to hear what that person has to say. I'm open to the possibility. But again, I agree, we made a statement about how this was going to happen, and something major would have to be going on for us to be coming out of what we agreed on with that. And so I, I'm open to the word possible being added. But I'm not loving the idea of that resolution vote coming out of this.
So the motion, the substitute motion on the floor to amend the agenda for number five, possible action by school board regarding school board's position on new election districts and cycles.
Yes, I do not agree that we need to put possible. It muddies the water, and it basically says we're just gonna, we can vote. And this has been going on for months and months and months. There's nothing that we have to vote on tonight, period. So possible, I do not like that word at all in there.
Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for my information, as Mrs. Manning has said, there is no litigation against the school board.
Correct.
The litigation is against city council. They were brought on a suit, which means that the charter says whatever happened with city council, we fall under. But it sort of concerned me that city council has not had public speakers to come in and speak on this litigation at all.
They actually have.
Well, from my understanding, they did not, and this is what we have in one, and well, you might know, they might have one in, in a couple of months. But they actually put before the public, they said they have not had discussion. So I'm wondering where that put us, and you said that they have, and that was...
Well, let me clarify. There have been numerous public hearings in the election district. On January 11th, there was a full presentation for the public, and it's on the website, fully explained the status, explained the school board situation. The city website has all the, all the pleadings are up there, all the explanations for the public. It's been out in the public on there. Now, if your question is, did they have public comment as to how, whether they should have amended their law, amended, appealed their lawsuit? Again, that's a legal question, and something I would talk to you tonight about, you know, at what point is it a public vote on what you're doing in a legal matter? But as far as the public not knowing about it, the city council has set the election systems. It's all on the website. They've had multiple public hearings. Just on January 11th, there was a full explanation for the public, exactly what's going on. They also included what they understood the school board situation to be. It's all out there. It's on the website right now. You can go look at it.
Now, what you said, the word was explanation, and I agree with you, it's all on the website about the Meps and all, and what is happening, explanation. But exactly, I said conversation has ever been open to the public. And from my understanding, there has not been public conversation between city council and the public concerning this matter.
Mrs. Lynetti, may I just say that we are getting into the agenda before the agenda's adopted. We need to vote on these results, these amendments and get into our closed session. So I appreciate everybody has now had a chance to weigh in. So the motion on the floor for the, to, to approve the amended agenda with number five reading possible action by school board regarding school board's position on new election districts and cycles. All in favor, please show a raised hand.
We have eight ayes.
And all opposed, kindly show a raised hand.
And we have three nays. The motion did pass.
And Mrs. Melnick, would you please read the motion to go into closed?
I move that the school board recess into closed session in accordance with the exemptions to open meeting laws set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 7 and 8 as amended. A7, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. An A8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, one, pending or probable litigation matters and developments in the election districts, and two, new election districts and election cycles. I made the motion.
Motion, a second. Mrs. Anderson, all in favor, show a raised...
I have discussion, please. I have a question.
Yes.
While I agree with discussing pending and probable litigation matters in closed session, I don't understand number two, where we're just going to be discussing the new election districts and election cycles. That doesn't say that it involves litigation, and this is something that we've discussed behind the scenes a number of times, and I think that should be discussed in open session, not closed session. I don't see an exception under...
It's also for advice from legal counsel. And as we discussed, if you remember when Mr. Anderson was here, some of the things that we were working on, how to resolve some of these issues, and what your status would be, that's legal consultation.
Okay, well, this doesn't say legal consultation. It says new election districts and election cycles. It does not say legal consultation.
Oh, and that's, that's the number four for the open session.
It's, I have it right here, number two, namely to discuss new election...
No, but what I'm saying is that apparently it's in both places, because that's number four in the open session.
What we're, what you asked for outside counsel for was to get an outside counsel opinion as to this, what your status was, the school board status was, in relation to the new election districts and cycles that were coming out. That he's here to give you advice as to what he understands the circumstances are and what you have to file with that. So that, to me, is part of your legal consultation.
Okay, but it doesn't say legal consultation on new election districts and election cycles. It just says, namely, to discuss new election districts and election cycles, which I don't think we should be. If we want to have legal consultation on new election districts and election cycles, I'm fine with that. But that's not what it says.
Well, it depends on how, if you read the call in, namely for, you said legal consultation, and these are the subjects that the legal consultation is relevant to.
That's not the motion that she just read.
A7 started with consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation. And A8 says consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Those are the exclusions that you're reading from FOIA, but when you get down to the specifics, namely to discuss.
It's, those are the reasons for closed sessions of the FOIA. They're not a FOIA exemption. They are reasons that you can go into closed session.
Yes, I understand. But it says, namely to discuss. These are the reasons that we're giving, that we're going into closed session. I agree with item one, pending or probable litigation. Item number two just says that we're going to discuss the new election districts and election cycles. That does not fit under the reasons for going into closed session. I'm reading off of what was in our agenda packet. And what she just read as well.
It's in your closed, your call for closed session, this one.
I mean, I think we agree that we need the attorney, we need to go and, we need to just go ahead and vote on this.
We have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Any other comments? Mrs. Lynetti has offered her explanation. All in favor, please show a raised hand.
We have eight ayes.
All opposed.
And we have three nays. The motion did pass to go into closed.
Never mind, you'll be transitioning down to the Einstein lab for the closed session, before your open session at 5:00.
Yes, we'll be, I'll repeat that, transitioning into Einstein now. Yeah. Yeah.
I think I have to be certain that I can make it through this. That means that we can see the future, we can imagine it too. We can also imagine what we do. And there is something for us to do. We can just watch it all of a sudden. What I believe is that we just have to believe that we can. We can do it. We can do it. So, if I see this, if I see this, I can see this. And if we have to have the place where we can.
Whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia.